There we go, is that better?
Better. If it didn't matter you want me to.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation and pledge. Commissioner Tommy Little give us our invocation. Commissioner Cheryl Wilson give us, lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, thank you for letting us be able to meet here tonight. And as we come today, here today, we seek your help in our affairs. We want to ask your blessing on those assembled here. We also want to ask your blessings on those who serve us and strive for our safety and our freedom, both here and abroad. We ask that you bless this meeting with your divine intervention and help us make the best use of our own. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessings. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call. You'll press your present button. Ms. Anderson.
Present and three absent.
All right. And I've heard from Commissioner Shalafant and Commissioner Cook, and Commissioner Cook's out of town tonight, and Commissioner Shalafant got the flu. So, we all hope he does better. Next item, approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled November 8, 2010 County Commission meeting. Copies were mailed to you. Proper motion. Commissioner Davis on the second. Sit on the machine. Yeah, all in favor? Okay, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. And copies were mailed to you. Proper motion, second, Commissioner Hancock. Who was my second? Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, do we have citizens communication? All right. We have one, two, three, four. Four people have signed up for citizens communication. Give each person three minutes. The first one I have is Adam Arrington. If you would come up and state your name and your address, please.
Hello, I'm Adam Arrington. I live on Blazer Road, 3295 Blazer Road. I would like to ask for your support on Resolution 117 for the addition and expansion of Hillsborough Middle and Elementary. I've got a son there now, and one that's moved on to Franklin High. And the school's been good to our family. Lots of families work really hard and volunteer out there and give their time. They're doing their part, we're doing our part. The kids are working hard and have a great attitude. And with the help of Dr. Looney, a lot of things have improved out there on the scholastic side. We need your support to help the facilities to rise to what the effort that we're giving. That's what I'd like to say.
Very good, thank you. Next person scheduled to speak, Lisa McReynolds. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Lisa McReynolds, and I live at 115 Jasper Avenue in Franklin. I'm here to talk about Hillsborough too. My neighborhood was rezoned from Grassland Middle School to Hillsborough Elementary Middle School this fall. With the current zoning plan, our middle school students at Grassland and all the fifth-grade rising students at Perry Creek Elementary School will attend Hillsborough next fall. At this time, Hillsborough does not have the facilities to hold this increased student count for the 2011-2012 school year. Tonight, I'm asking the commissioners approve the funding request Dr. Looney has made to your voting body. We believe in the vision that Dr. Looney has outlined for Hillsborough, and this funding is crucial to execute that vision. Tonight, please vote yes to fund the capital expansion plans at Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Brad Phillips.
Hello, my name is Brad Phillips, and I live at 1298 Chapman's Retreat Drive in Spring Hill, Tennessee. And I'm here to, I don't know where it is on the agenda, I didn't get a copy of it, but about the heritage baseball fields and the sewage and water for that. We currently have over 750 kids that play at our park, and we, at this time, do not have sewage or water. I think it's one of the only parks in Williamson County that does not have that, an active park. Met with Ms. Judy Hayes and several of the Spring Hill representatives a few months ago and got that rolling. And I know that there was some pictures, but I don't think you guys want to see them again, the ones that you've seen it. But Ms. Judy, I think, does have the pictures in case someone wants to see those. We ask you that you would approve that tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. The last person to speak is Mark McCutcheon.
Good evening, my name is Mark McCutcheon. I live at 1900 Townsend Boulevard in Franklin. Asking you this evening to support the Hillsborough resolution that Dr. Looney's put in front of you. As Lisa stated very well, it's a good use of the public resources, it's a good staged plan that doesn't require a full-blown school out in Hillsborough at this time, but it's, we definitely need these classrooms and the extra space out there. This plan is done in stages so that hopefully someday we'll have a full-blown middle school out there, and this is a good first step, and I just encourage you to support that plan. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, under Communications and Messages, first item I have, we have a late-file resolution that was put on your desk, 11126. Do I have anybody object to hearing that tonight? Yeah, it's a donation from, let's see, Middle Tennessee Electric for $9,060. So, just kind of in-and-out money. And it'll come in at the end of appropriations after 11123. All right. And the next item I have, I would like to request to move up Resolution, I believe it's 11117 and 11118, to move those up under, oh, I'm sorry, under elections, under the judicial commissioner position, and we'll hear those at that time, so. Any objections to that? All right, so we'll move those up. And that's all the communications I have, so we'll hear from County Mayor Anderson. Oh, I'm sorry.
Who's the very first?
Well, yeah, they'll come up under elections and appointments. When we get to those, we'll vote on those resolutions at that time, and any others that may be nominated.
Ms. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll have David to touch on the financial conditions of the county as he does every month, and also thanks for making an effort to be here because of the hard, the snow that we had last week. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, we have the three reports that we normally give you each month, starting with the monthly budget report of all funds. And due to the week's delay, it gave us a little more time to get December ready, so we actually have October, November, and December in your packet. December gives us a six-month look at all the funds, and looking down through there, percentage-wise, they're all are kind of in the neighborhood of where you'd think they would be. Our revenue expenditures don't come in in nice, even packages each month. December is a very heavy collection month for property tax, and then we'll also have a good month in January and February, so you'll see those revenues coming up. Expenditure-wise, if you look at the debt service funds, they appear to be low at this point in time, but we have the major payments in the spring for principal interest on the debt service. So, other than those, everything appears to be in order there. The next report is from the Cool Springs Conference Center. We have two months, October and November. We had two excellent months. In October, we received a check for a little over $53,000, and in November, we received a check for a little over $61,000. We do not have the December report yet. I received a email last week saying that due to the bad weather in Atlanta, that's where their home office is, that they're running a little slow, so hopefully we'll have those for you next month. And then finally, we have the privilege tax collections, and we have November and December on those. And then we have our chart that we've been providing to you, and we always like to point out the positive things. If you look at your chart, we had to revise it this month and add a couple lines on the top because we hit a spike upward. And even though that's maybe not representative of where we are each month, we're glad to see it. We had a large apartment complex to come in, and so in total, we had about a little over $900,000 come in that month, so we were back down a little bit in December, but we'll take any improvement that we can get. I'll answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Coleman? I see none, thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Ms. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to address three more items. First of all, the hard work that the Highway Department, Eddie Hood and all of his men and women out over the last several, about a week ago now, made a very strong effort to get the roads clear and to work with getting people to and from in the places they needed to go. You will see an amendment being offered tonight for the purchase of another $100,000 for salt. I think John's going to make that amendment on there. We need it, we've gone through the salt that we got. We used about five, about five tons of salt a day when we were able to doing that, so we're going to be asking for $200,000, and I would ask you to support that, just in case we get some more bad weather. Next, Ms. Chairman, I would ask, if you'd allow me, to introduce the new Animal Control Director. If I could have Doug Brightwell come up, I need to put a name and a face so that you know who our Animal Control Director is. His, this was a very strong effort. We had over eighty-some odd applicants apply for the job. We went through a very lengthy process, process in which to qualify and to choose Doug to head up our animal control. I know several of you have already met him in different functions, and he is up and running, and if you'd allow me to let him say a few words.
Yeah, please.
Good evening, I'm Doug Brightwell. I've been in about, since December 1st, very happy to be here. I think we're starting to make some improvements, some advances over with the facilities and some of the services we're providing, and if y'all have got any input or any, anything that you need some attention, just let me know.
Very good, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Chairman, thank you, Doug. And finally, Ms. Chairman, tonight you're voting on various, very important issues. I know you've got a very lengthy agenda, but it was also, many of you do not get the school board agenda packet that they send out. I get those when they mail them out. And one of the items that will be coming to you in February will be another million and six, $1,600,000 that will be presented to you at that time. And I would ask that Dr. Looney, when he comes up, if you have some questions you might want to address in that area. David gave you a very important number of how we're doing and how we're performing, but we're getting ready to start into our budget processes here in the next thirty days. Many of you know that the revenue stream is how we balance the budget on the other side of expenditures, and we have balanced that over the last two or three years on several different points and issues. I encourage you, as we go through these next through ninety days, that we know exactly what we are allocating for next year's budget. They're running some numbers for us now. We should have those available for you based on the tax rate we set last year at 231, which has been the same for several years. But I also encourage you, looking at the budget side, of how much that we're slowly adding to that number each and every county commission, not just schools, but in a lot of other areas, because that will be a very critical component as we approach this budget cycle, particularly in the times that we are in today. Joey has been very faithful in sending us the sales tax numbers, you saw the privilege tax numbers, but a strong indication is our spending just as well as our expense side, so I need to make that known to you in my position as the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Next, we have Dr. Mike Looney. I'm sorry. Commissioner Barnum.
Yep. One of the things I've been doing recently is looking at a lot of financial statements. And at the end of '07, the hospital had cash and cash equivalents of about $34,606,000. Don Webb's most recent financial report that was in our packet showed cash of $58,404,000. To me, it sounds like the $34,606,000 was adequate for their needs, and I'm curious, how do we get, say, $23,800,000 coming back from the hospital into the county, since it is the taxpayers' money? And I'd like, what I'd like to see is for the, about $15,100 of it to go to pay off the subsidy for the hospital construction project that the taxpayers are picking up right now. I think the outstanding balance is $15,100. What I'd like to see, the 8.7 do is move to the general fund to be used to mitigate any potential property tax increase. That's about 12 and a half cents, I think, in the calculation process. That could definitely help us in the future, and this is the taxpayers' money, so I would have a hard time voting for a tax increase when this money's sitting there.
Ms. Chairman, can I address?
Yes, please.
I will relay your information, if I hear you, you're right, to the Finance Committee. They are actually meeting one day this week. I think that they're actually, the full board is meeting next, yeah, Thursday. But if you'll allow me to relay that message, what's your, I'm sure Jeff has made some good notes here of the numbers, or write that down so that I can have it.
Okay. Yeah, I just, just, I've noticed this cash going up, it's gone up 60% in three years, and it is the taxpayers' money, and I think we're looking at potential property taxes this year, and I think this could, could help us out. And I don't know the process, that's my main question. Do we need to do a resolution, or do you talk to them and?
I don't know that I've ever been asked that before, but I will, I will start with a conversation and try to figure out, maybe get that to them, to their Finance Committee, and let them go through the processes. Maybe Jeff could help me out here from a legal standpoint, if that's, I don't know how, I don't know what a resolution would do in terms of forcing them to come back with the money.
I don't think it would either.
I don't think they're eating that one, but I'll have to go at it a different way.
Right. And I appreciate you doing that, because it's, I think they've got, we have not seen any, the taxpayers have not seen any money from the hospital, and this is a good way for them to contribute to this year's dilemma.
Relay that message.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jack?
Any further questions for the mayor? Commissioner Hayes?
Welcome Doug and say how glad we are to have him here, and if you haven't had a chance to go by and meet him, do so. Also, with your permission, may I introduce Nancy Zion as our Acting Director of the Solid Waste Department. Nancy, would you stand up? As you know, Louis Bumpus did retire, and Nancy is the interim director at this point.
Jack, if you don't mind, if I could go back over to Judy, and many of you know we've had a public task force dealing with animal control, animal control issues for the last year, year and a half, and that committee is working through legal counsel and helping to develop, and I'm putting Judy on the spot, she did not know I was going to ask this, but if you would kind of take us through the resolution that this body funded, approved, and what we're going to be submitting back to the cities, maybe the press could help us pick up on that, if you know about it. If you don't, I'll touch on it.
Thank you. We have spent, as Roger said, over a year going through the program and the whole scenario of the office of our animal control. The first thing, the framework that we needed were the rules and regulations, and we spent a laborious time with every A, N, and D with all the legal counsel. Lisa Carson was just marvelous, and we passed this as a commission, and it did serve as our framework. With that framework, we've gone into writing policies and procedures and rules and regulations that would be suggested for the operation of the animal control. We were a part of the interviewing and processing of looking for a new director and getting the animal control to a level where we will be an example nationally in the animal control field. And we believe that Doug is one with the vision that can help bring us to that. We've had a diversified group of people across section who have worked on this, and we look toward completing it within the next month or two, presenting a copy to Rogers. Of course, one would be available for any of you, and then at the discretion of Doug for his, his call as director, to put in those procedures and policies that will bring us into an area that I think we all will be so proud of. Our object is to stay within budget conservatively, but is to increase adoptions, decrease euthanasia, and make it a community involvement with disaster plan relief, with a plan for all types of activities that the community can be involved. So, I think it will be brought up to a level that our other departments are, and we have someone, I think, with that character that can do that, and I look forward for the completion. It's been a privilege to work with the group that we've been working with.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Be no further questions for the mayor. We will move to Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
Well, Happy New Year. We do have a number of items for your consideration tonight. We do, we'll be here to answer any questions you may have. I would like to publicly thank the mayor and all of the county officials that helped the school district during this last snow event. As you know, we had a significant amount of snow, and we went through a lot of trouble to try to clear the roads and the school parking lots in the time of the way. We did manage to have school on Friday and are hopeful that we can get to the balance of this school year without using the remaining five weather days that we have. Our school AYP results are in. It's a pleasure to report to you that our district on the achievement side of the house received all As, as we have historically done. We also have some less good news as it relates to student growth scores. We are, we have a lot of room for improvement there, and we're focusing on that as a school district. We'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this point in time. Otherwise, I'll sit down and answer your questions when the resolutions come forward.
Any questions for Dr. Looney? Commissioner Davis? Could you elaborate a little bit on what the mayor was saying about Hillsborough and an additional resolution coming up?
Yes, sir. Well, the Board of Education meets tomorrow night, and we do have some resolutions going before the Board of Education. There are three specific resolutions that the Board will be considering tomorrow night. Two of them relate specifically to Centennial High School, $300,000 resolution to repair the drainage problems that exist at Centennial High School. In addition to that, Centennial High School's paving is degraded. If you've been to the parking lot recently, you will have noticed that. We're estimating about $600,000 for that project. This is assuming that the Board of Education approves those resolutions. And then finally, the Hillsborough sewage plant was built in 1979. It is only operating at about 14% capacity, but frankly, it's an old system that is causing us problems. It's been something that we've been working with TDEC on for the last several years to try to keep it operational. It's our, it's our opinion that now's the time to try to get that repaired before we come, before we get shut down. So, that's a $700,000 project in maintenance.
Could I follow up, Mr. Chairman? Yes, please. If now's the time, and it may be, should, could that have been in the resolution that's before us tonight regarding the same school property?
We've debated that, certainly could be. They're two very separate and distinct projects. The latter one, the one that we're talking about now, the sewage plant, is a maintenance and repair item. We typically have not included maintenance and repair items in new construction. We certainly could. We just have separated them, and not sure how the Board of Education will respond tomorrow night. They may reject it, and so this might be a moot point, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Daner?
This resolution's the one that all those things are combined, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And, and I was at your work session, and did I hear Leslie Wright not put Leslie on the spot, but didn't I hear that you had the funds within your own budget to cover that if we didn't approve it?
We'll still need your approval, but to do the project, but we may have some leftover capital funds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Commissioner Daner? Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other, any further questions for Dr. Looney? I see none, thank you. Any other report from anyone else? We'll move on to elections and appointments. First one, we have the Stormwater Appeals Board, two-year terms expiring in January 2013. The Building Contractor Representative term expiring, John Minton. Nomination's John Minton. Doesn't need a motion on each one. Commissioner Little on the motion, Commissioner Wilson on the second. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Minton passes unanimously. Engineering Representative, Rick Shuff. Term expiring, nomination, Rick Shuff. Commissioner Wilson on the motion, Commissioner Little on the second. Agricultural, oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Agricultural Representative, term expiring, John Kenny. Nomination, John Kenny. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Green the second. All in favor, John Kenny? Opposed? Opposed? John Kenny passes. Also, three-year term expiring, January two thousand fourteen, Residential Community Development Representative, Dan Crunk. Commissioner Langston on the approval, Commissioner Brockman on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dan Crunk passes unanimously. The Homeowners Association Representative, term expiring, Brad Hoot, nomination, Brad Hoot.
Boo for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the motion, Commissioner Brockman the second. All in favor of Brad Hoot?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hoot passes unanimously. And the Environmental Representative, term expiring, Dory Bowles.
Need for approval, second.
Commissioner Brockman, the motion, Commissioner Davis the second, all in favor of Dory Bowles?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Bowles passes unanimously. Agricultural Committee, two-year term expiring, January thirteenth, Farmer Position, Dan Bond, expiring, nomination, Dan Bond. Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Wilson the second, all in favor of Dan Bond?
Aye.
Opposed? The Farm Woman Position, term expiring, Cherry Jackson, nomination, Cherry Lane Darkin. Commissioner Hester, the motion, Commissioner Hayes the second, all in favor of Cherry Lane Darkin?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Darkin passes unanimously. County Commissioner Position, Lou Green Jr., term expiring, nomination, Lewis Green Jr.
Need for approval?
Commissioner Little, the motion, and Commissioner Hayes the second, all in favor of Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, Hospital Board of Trustees, unexpired term expiring of May two thousand eleven, resigned Clyde Lynch, nomination Cheryl Wilson.
Look for approval, second.
Commissioner Smith, the motion, Commissioner Daner the second, all in favor of Cheryl Wilson?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Wilson, passes unanimously. Next item we have on the agenda is the Judicial Commissioner, unexpired four-year term expiring of June thirteenth. Resigned is Casey Ashworth. We have, I guess right now I will entertain nominations from the floor if there are any. Commissioner Bradford?
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add a nomination.
Of that of Larry D. Drolsom.
All right. He will be added. Any others? Anyone from the audience? I see none, I move that the nomination ceases. Linda, are they loaded on the machine?
Don't we have to do a resolution first? We need to go to seventeen minutes, we even meant to.
Oh, we do. Okay. I apologize.
We also need nominations on the ones we are inviting.
First one I have is Johnny Beard. We have a nomination for Johnny Beard. Commissioner Hayes on the nomination, do I have a second? Does it, doesn't need a second, I'm sorry. Sandra Heathcock, have a nomination on Ms. Heathcock? Brendan Ryan. Third nomination, Iris O'Brien.
Somebody.
Mr. Langston. Fourth nomination, Vicky Rose.
Somebody.
Tom Bean. And then we have Larry Drolsom, already nominated. Commissioner Herbert?
I wanted to make a motion to defer it for one month until the next commission meeting, and have the Human Resources Committee interview each of the applicants and check their references.
Proper motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Langston? We have a proper motion and a second. Linda, can you load that on the board? To defer one month? Any discussion on the deferral?
Got a bunch on the board.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Got to get used to reading this thing. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comment and maybe a question is that in reading the memo from our county council, it seems to me that if it's deferred to the Human Resources Committee, they're, they will not be allowed to make a recommendation. So I'm just, I'm unsure of what the point is in deferring if that group, in reviewing their credentials, are not able to, to move that forward with a recommendation. So I, I would be reluctant to, to make that move and come back with the same, and be in the same situation tonight.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brockman is correct. They do not have the authority to make a recommendation and be brought back to this committee. However, they could do a report of some sort. I'll answer any questions.
Don't go away.
What sort of report?
Commissioner Smith? Oh, wait just a minute, Commissioner Smith, did you have a follow up?
My follow up was what kind of report?
Uh, credentials, questions that are asked, things like that. They could not have a conclusion, is, is my point.
So if you have a resume, they're, they're going to go back and check and make sure it's accurate?
Correct. They can.
Commissioner Smith?
I had essentially the same question as Commissioner Brockman, as to what we would really gain from another thirty days, and with the limitations on the Human Resources Committee, is, is that really going to tell us anything?
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Comit, Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question was exactly the same. Until I got legal opinion, I thought Commissioner Herbert's motion was the way to go. I no longer believe that, so I'm going to vote against this motion.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Hayes?
The reason I can support this at this point is that so many of these people I did not know, and I've gotten to know them a little bit better, but I felt like that if, if the human resource could come together, realizing that they could not make a recommendation in a room where we were all invited, let all the candidates come, present themselves, have a certain two or three questions that each person might be asked, the same question, where we could see their answer, we could evaluate their response, we could have a background information, and we would have legal counsel to tell us what the rules and regulations involve. It would give us a clearer understanding of what we were voting on. I know two of the people personally who are on the list. One of them, I'll say, because I checked with legal counsel, I'm going to be totally upfront. One, I did find out only when the packages were sent, that he is married to a cousin of mine. So he's a cousin by marriage, and that's Johnny Beard. And I'm going to support him for the, at least the first run through, because he does have a criminal justice degree. But I do believe it would be well and good for us all to, here all on the same level, where we all can know who is, who is up for this post. It's very vital, it's very important, and they do need to know something about law and, and how to handle themselves. And that's why I can support this deferral.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes? Any other follow up? Linda's got it on the board, so we're going to vote motion to defer to the February meeting. Vote yes if you're in favor of deferment, no if you're opposed. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Seven yes, fourteen no.
Motion fails. If I may, kind of on that same thought process, Commissioner Hayes, if we could have, if the applicants are here, I would invite them up to, to tell us a little bit about yourself and give you about three minutes, if you would so care to do so. And I'll just go in the order I have, Johnny Beard. Is he here? Or maybe he is and doesn't want to speak? Okay. Next one, Larry Drolsom.
Committee of Commission members I, I know and have known over the years. My name's Larry Drolsom. I've served this county in many different capacities. I was a Assistant District Attorney for six years under Joe Vaughn and Elmer Davies. I've also been a public defender, was, worked there for about fifteen and a half years. And so I know both sides of the issues, and I, and I think, and believe I understand the nuances of the issuing warrants and issuing search warrants. In fact, while I was at the District Attorney's Office, I assisted in helping do many search warrants for law enforcement and, and for, for any other police officers that might have a, a need to do what they need to do. I have had some experiences. I'm, I'm a master instructor at Trial College, been doing that for about eight and a half years. And it was really enjoyable, I love seeing the kids. They were, the young lawyers that's coming through our, our program was, it's like a breath of fresh, fresh air. They got, have a lot of talented people out there. I've also spoken in many capacities, several, at least two of them have been on search warrants. I've taught other lawyers about some of the nuances about search warrants. I think that's what differentiates me from some of the other candidates. I've been practicing law for thirty-four years, and have graduated from Franklin High School and Middle Tennessee State University. And so I am a Franklin resident, I believe. Even though my father, who was the first general manager of the CPS plant, came down from Chicago. Franklin's my home, it'll, it'll never be any different. We have probably the greatest county, the greatest city in, in Tennessee. With that comment, if there is any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if there's any concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Drolsom.
Thank you.
Sandra Heathcock?
Hello, my name is Sandra Heathcock. My husband and I, James, we live on thirty-eight thirty Bear Creek Road in Thompson Station. I was hired in nineteen eighty-six by Joe Herbert, and ever since that time, I have been employed by the Circuit Clerk's Office. Due to my experience working there, and most of those years have been spent working in the General Sessions Criminal Office, I feel like I have acquired a knowledge of the criminal and criminal, you know, activities and the things that I've learned. We are on the receiving end of the magistrate's office. In other words, all the paperwork, the warrants, search warrants, complaints, citations, they come to our office, where we set them up, give them a case number, and from that point on, from, you know, they're docketed, and got, from that time to the disposition, that's what we deal with. I just feel like I could do this job. I've often wondered how, what the magistrates do, and I'm not in no way saying that I know what they do, but I've got a pretty good idea from being on the receiving end. I would appreciate your support. Really humbly ask, you know, at this time, that you consider me for this job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is Iris O'Brien. Ms. O'Brien here? I don't believe so. Next on the list is Vicky Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Vicky Rose, and I've lived in Wayneside County my entire life. My whole family lives here. I'm a business owner in Wayneside County, and I've always been in the service arena. So I enjoy helping people, I enjoy serving people. I'm now ready to take it a step further and serve my community. I've spent many hours in the magistrate's office over the past few weeks, so I've observed the duties and responsibilities of the magistrate. I know what a big responsibility this is, and I will take it very seriously. I think that the essential qualities in a magistrate, they must possess to be successful, is integrity, high ethical standards, sound judgment, sound temperament, good listening skills, good communication skills, commitment, and reliability. Through my entrepreneurial endeavors, I possess these qualities. I come into this position with a fresh set of eyes. I'm enthusiastic, I'm focused, I'm quick study. I know that we're going to receive good training, and I'm confident in my abilities. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. All right. It's my understanding we have these loaded on the machine. As each person comes up, we'll vote. It takes thirteen votes to secure the nomination. So we, we will vote in, if we go through the names and no one gets thirteen, we will go through and vote again that way. If no one at that time gets thirteen, then, then we'll start eliminating the, the last one and vote for the remainder until someone gets thirteen votes. The, do you, do you have one loaded on the machine?
Do you want Mr. Beard's?
Yeah.
Is this, is this now I have it, I can do, I can change it, is that?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's appropriate. Is, anybody have a comment on that? We already have a motion, so we're ready to vote. Johnny Beard is Judicial Commissioner. Commissioner Green?
This is only a vote to affirm that I would desire that person. We don't vote yea, nay, just yea. Thank you.
Yes.
An affirmative vote for the candidate that you desire.
Mr. Chairman, could you clarify that?
Yeah.
We're only voting yea, we don't vote nay.
Correct. So if, if you're for this person, you vote yes. If you don't support that person, you don't vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
One time.
Yes. Commissioner, thank you.
Are we going to do it that way or?
Yeah. The, the first one we'll vote is Johnny Beard.
He thinks it's Chicago.
I thought he ought to say that. I pulled our lead.
Board, are you in there?
Oh, okay.
No. You can take your vote off, though. I mean, you can just press the button and it'll go away.
Hit the present button and see if it changes.
There you go.
I don't want that vote.
Well, I know, I was just trying to clear.
Okay, just, just stop and reload Johnny Beard.
All right.
Not either.
He's still showing the beep.
Well, this vote don't count.
Okay. If you support Mr. Beard, vote yes. If you do not, do not vote. Everyone voted? It was to vote. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. We have two yes for Mr. Beard.
All right. Second. Sandra Heathcock is the next person. Likewise, vote yes if you're in favor, do not vote if you're not. Everybody ready to vote? Anybody want to change your vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
No, no, no vote.
No vote. Okay.
Zero.
This is the next one. All right. The next person is Iris O'Brien. If you're in favor of Miss O'Brien, vote yes. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Zero, no.
The next person is Vicki Rose. Everybody voted that wishes to? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Six yes.
All right, the next vote is Larry Drolson. Everyone voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, thirteen yes, zero no.
Okay, Mr. Drolson has been nominated. Has been elected, I'm sorry. Wrong terminology. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent. Anybody want to pull anything off? The consent? You ready, Linda? Everybody in favor of the consent? Vote yes, oppose, vote no?
Cheryl.
Commissioner Wilson. Consent agenda. Commissioner Herbert? Oh, okay. Anybody wish to change your vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes. And zero no.
Consent agenda passes. Next resolution I have is one eleven one. Formerly eleven ten one. A resolution electing to adopt new continuing education process for Williamson County Judicial Commissioners is provided in public chapter nine eighty-nine of the two thousand and ten Public Acts of the Hundred and Sixth General Assembly. Commissioner Langston? Proper motion, I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Explanation, Commissioner Langston.
Okay, as instructed by the, our committee, I'd move the table of this resolution one dash eleven dash one.
Yes.
Okay, got a proper motion and second to table, there's no discussion. So we're ready to vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Crazy Linda? If you're ready to vote on the motion to table, push the yes button to table. No to oppose. Anybody wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Successfully tabled. Next resolution is one eleven four. Resolution amending the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven Highway Department Budget and appropriate up to a hundred thousand dollars for replenishment of road salt. Commissioner Hancock? Proper motion, Commissioner Green, the second.
This time I yield for an amendment, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Hancock. It has come to my attention that because of the great deal of snowfall that we have had, in addition to this one hundred thousand dollars, we need another one hundred thousand dollars, please, for a total of two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of salt. And this is to come from the Highway Department fund balance. I would like to thank the men and women of the Highway Department for their great job through this unexpected weather conditions that we've had and ask you to support this two hundred thousand dollar total. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hester. And that was a motion, so I need a second. Commissioner Wilson, the second. Any discussion on the motion? You have the amendment loaded, Linda? Okay. We're voting on the amendment, and the amendment is to increase it an additional hundred thousand dollars to a total of two hundred thousand dollars. So if you're in favor of the amendment, push the yes button, opposed, you know button. Anyone want to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
All right, back to the original motion, our original resolution, which has now been amended to two hundred thousand dollars. Any discussion on the resolution? I see none. We ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button, opposed, you know button? Anyone would like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes as amended. Resolution one eleven six. Resolution establishing the two thousand and ten eleven American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Grant Number Two for the Sheriff's Department totaling eighty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Langston? Proper motion? Commissioner Williams, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five zero.
Budget Committee?
Four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, this is the second year of a grant that provides funding to investigate elderly abuse and domestic violence. This is the second year of the grant, and I would urge everyone to support it, please.
Very good. Sheriff Wong, do you have a comment? Any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor, push the yes button, opposed, you know button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution one eleven seven. Resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of an intent to fund of two million one hundred thirty-nine thousand for additional classroom space at Hillsborough K through eight. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Proper motion and second, Commissioner Williams. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an important amount of money to be funded for Hillsborough Middle. You heard the citizens before us earlier very articulate, articulate in what was needed. This, hopefully, we are voting on it as amended, is that correct? Or do I need to offer something?
Well, we don't have an amendment as yet.
Can I have the amendment on the floor?
Yeah, let me back up a little bit and get the Education Committee report.
Yes, education is seven yes, zero no, as amended.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. That would be six one. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. It's not correct here.
Commissioner Green, Budget?
Budget Committee voted s five zero, as amended.
Okay. Now back to you, Commissioner. Well, we don't have an amendment on the floor yet. Okay.
You want me?
Well, Commissioner Hancock?
I was wanting to speak to the resolution, not the amendment.
Oh, okay. Well, let me defer back, Commissioner Brockman.
Yes. Both Budget and Education had the amendment and voted on it as it was, as it is attached. There was just a small change in the wording. If you could, if I could put the amendment on the floor, please?
Yes, please.
Second.
You, would you read the amendment?
Yes. We changed the second whereas, staff analysis of student populations through this systematic review establishes that construction of a middle school on the Oakview property is not a feasible and wise use of resources due to the unavailability of sewer. However, there's an immediate need to expand the capacity of middle school in West Franklin. That's the change. It's the unavailability of sewer.
Okay.
The second whereas, be it further resolved that the county authorizes the use of a remaining bond proceeds previously issued for the construction of elementary schools and a middle school for this purpose. Therefore, funding coming from leftover funds from other construction projects.
Move for approval.
Proper motion and second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Hasn't been seconded yet.
Second.
Oh, I thought you seconded it. You seconded it.
All right. We're thirting it now.
It's all good. Are we ready to vote? Commissioner Ryan, do you have a question on the amendment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I may ask Dr. Looney one quick question regarding this. Dr. Looney, I know you have mentioned before regarding the property off of Hympeck Lane where a middle school was originally proposed for the southern half of the eleventh district. It is not feasible. Has there been any further discussion by the school board as far as if you're going to sell it? If you are, when? What is the long-term plans with this property?
We certainly believe that as sewer becomes more accessible there, that that particular piece of property would be more feasible for a school site and/or for sale. At this point in time, the board does not intend to sell the property. We believe it would be in the taxpayers' best interest to hold on to that property so it could increase in value and either build a middle school there or sell it at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Looney.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. Dr. Looney, very quickly, the second piece of this amendment where it talks about coming out of remaining bond proceeds, so does that mean that this is requiring no new money and we don't anticipate having to borrow any additional money for this project?
No additional debt will be required of the county commission.
Okay, thank you.
You ready to vote on the amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bank?
Just, it's a technical question, really. Where it be further resolved, remaining bond proceeds previously issued for the construction of elementary schools and a middle school for this purpose? We don't identify. Is that necessary that we identify the elementary schools and the middle school? Lawyer said no, we're good.
Mr. Coleman, would you like to come up?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it says a middle school. I mean, I don't know if there's four middle schools out there or one or what.
It's not often I disagree with counsel, but maybe I didn't understand. But we do have to specify that the funds are coming from leftover elementary middle school because that's rural debt as opposed to general debt.
But we don't have to.
Don't name the school.
So if there's two out there, this says a middle school. I'm, you know.
They may have already identified that, I don't know that, but we wouldn't have to be that specific, but we do have to know it's coming from a middle or elementary.
Dr. Looney?
I just concur. I don't see a need to name the school. I believe when the bond was issued, it didn't name the school to start with, so I don't see the need.
And there's only one, we're dealing with anyway, is that?
Yes, sir, and I'll tell you which one it is, but it's not, I mean, it's Spring Station Middle School.
That's fine.
Any further discussion on the amendment? And it's loaded on the board. You ready to vote on the amendment? Push the yes button if you support the amendment, no button if you don't. Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
All right, the amendment passes. Now back to the main resolution. Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to associate myself with citizens that's already started out there and well on their way to making that a great school. This is, this is really needed, and I thank the, thank the committee for recommending.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Commissioner Hayes?
I had some serious thinking when this resolution first appeared because I did oppose and do oppose the closing of Pinewood Elementary School. And here, ten, ten minutes away, we talk about adding another element, another wing. But I did seriously ponder of all the needs that Hillsborough has. Hillsborough has needed a facelift for some time and has needed some work done. If it had been kept up with Pinewood, as we're trying to do here with Hillsborough, maybe it wouldn't have had the same falling. I remember years ago when Pinewood still had a full principal and a full cafeteria, never enjoying any more going to visit a school than I did that one because of the feeling of community, the feeling of patriotism, the feeling of citizenship that I saw there. I think much of those same feelings are evident at Hillsborough. And I want us to make sure that we maximize and make use of that building and improve it and make it the school that it can be. I think the people who are coming out there from West Haven have a lot to offer and a lot to bring. But I also want to say, the people of Hillsborough have a lot to offer and a lot to give too in their citizenship, in their spirit of community, and in their pride of their community and their care. So I think it can be a win-win for everybody. And because of that, I don't, don't want to hurt anybody that's going out there. I want to improve education all across, so I am going to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes, the, the only problem I see with all this is your projections at this school are going to be lower next year than they are this year. You're telling me a capacity of the school is five ninety-seven. The numbers I see as projections are going to be lower than five ninety-seven. Why would we add on to a school that's not at capacity?
Yeah, Dr. Looney?
The reality of it is, is that the capacity calculation does not include the five portable classrooms that are at Hillsborough that are dilapidated to the point where they're barely serviceable. It is true that the way the board handles its rezoning, including the grandfathering provision, it is typically the second year and sometimes the third year when the enrollment calculations change at a specific school. So you will see a small dip at Hillsborough because there are students that are leaving Hillsborough from the elementary level and more students at the middle school level that are going to be there. So you're getting, you're accomplishing two things. You're making sure the capacity is there for the new arriving students, but you're also getting rid of five substandard classrooms that currently exist at Hillsborough.
Right, but our, if I may, Chairman, capacity numbers and actual student enrollment, student enrollment doesn't matter if they're in a portable or in a classroom, is that not true?
Capacity does not calculate portable classrooms.
That's right, but the school, you're saying capacity of the school is five ninety-seven. Am I not correct?
That's correct.
So forget the portables. The number of students at that school is less than five ninety-seven. Actually.
That's correct.
So why would we add on, is my question?
Well, because boys and girls don't fit, fit into neat packages of twenty-five students to make even classes throughout the school. In particular, Hillsborough is a very unique school because it's a K-8 school. And so when you start, start adding extra programs, the arts, some of the, the extra, I'm sorry, some of the elective classes, it becomes more complicated than it would say at an elementary school.
Right, and if I may, while we're on the, needing a middle school in the western part of the county, I see that as an issue, I understand that. I'm all for upgrading Hillsborough. Middle school, elementary. I don't understand looking at elementary schools in the vicinity of this school that are under almost 50% capacity. Why would we leave a unique situation at Hillsborough when 10 minutes away, we had a unique situation at Pinewood and we closed it? My situation is, why would we not try to get Hillsborough to this full-blown middle school and then we don't have to build a middle school in the western part of the county?
Well, first of all, I would say that Pinewood's closure is a completely independent issue of the matter before you today. The board voted to close Pinewood, has acted in that matter, has been put to rest. It was primarily because of the dwindling enrollment numbers at Pinewood and our inability to provide adequate programming from our vantage point at a cost-effective rate for the students at Pinewood in comparison to the balance of the elementary schools. So I think it's very important that we make a distinguishment between, or that we distinguish the difference between Pinewood closing and this recommendation. They are not related.
Follow-up, Commissioner Jones?
And I do, I do understand that by all means, don't get me wrong. Now, next question is what Mayor Anderson brought before us. Why would we add on to a school that's got a septic system problem? Because if we add on to a school, we're just making a bigger issue out of a lot of things. I think one of the issues at Pinewood was a septic system that we couldn't add on there, is what, couldn't rezone to that school. If that was not true, that was the statement come from the school board. But at the same time, you've got this same situation at Hillsborough with the septic system.
Well, that's not completely accurate. We're using approximately 14% of the Hillsborough capacity. So adding 20 classrooms would not have affected our ability to use the current septic system at Hillsborough. And by the way, there are other entities tied on to the septic system. I believe the fire station and some of the other nearby facility, government facilities are tied on to the septic system. The problem with the septic system is quite simple. It's the 1979 system, and we are using a lot of chlorine to keep the system up and operational. And it's our fear that whether we added additional utilization to that sewage system or not, the system is going to fail. And as part of our regular replacement and maintenance services that we provide for all of our school buildings, the time has come to replace that system. Or if we don't, then, you know, we can play it a day at a time, and when it goes out, then we shut school.
Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am saddened to see the Pinewood school closed because it is a community school. And when you drive by and see that facility, it, to me, it's historic. However, as you said, Dr. Looney, I do understand that these are two different issues, and I appreciate your making that distinction. Hillsborough Elementary School and Middle School, these classrooms will be to the school's advantage. I support these. And I also recognize that in the subdivisions that are currently zoned for this next year for Hillsborough Middle School, that there are many homes that have been approved in West Haven. They have been approved for construction, and I am sure that they will be built, possibly not in such a manner as they were built in years past. But yes, they will be built, and individuals will come to Hillsborough Middle School. I think that we need these classrooms. I support it, and I would ask for your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, the only comment I have, and I will probably vote on it right after I get through, I see Ernie over there eyeing me. But anyway, my comment is, Trinity Elementary is a school that went through this very same scenario. I mean, it's like ditto. And they had the portables, we had classes, we had art classes on the stage, we had the cafeteria where you had to split all the children up. This is something we really need. Let's go for it, and I do support it. And I just wanted to say thank you, and I think that we do need support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Williams? Proper motion and second. All in favor of calling the question? Opposed? All right. So we're ready to vote? Ready to vote on 111-7, as amended? Push a yes button if you're in favor, you know button if you're opposed. Anyone like to change the vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Motion passes. Next resolution, 111-8, resolution requesting Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' approval of an intent to fund up to $5 million for land purchase in northeast area of county for a high school. Proper motion. Commissioner Brockman?
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the second. School board, we have a... Twelve, yes. Zero, no. Okay. Education Committee?
Education, seven, yes. Zero, no, to defer for a month.
All right. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 5-0, as amended.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, this is a resolution requesting funding for a future school in the area that's been identified in the northeast part of Williamson County for a new high school. This money would get the land purchased as well as other aspects of the project. And it's been requested for $5 million to acquire 100 acres of land for this purpose, and this has been amended, so I would perhaps agree with that.
Yes, Budget Committee amended this as amended, and the amendment is at the bottom of the resolution there. It says amend the amount not to exceed $3 million in spending $30,000 per acre for purchase of the property, using all funds left over from Summit High School construction project and borrowing, borrowing no more than $1 million.
Proper motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Bain, the second. Any comments on the amendment?
I might, it was not stated in the amendment here, but that $3 million also includes the due diligence cost is in that $3 million also.
Okay, and that's included in your motion, and you're good with that, Commissioner Bain? I'm sorry. Commissioner Danner?
Do we vote on this amendment first? I would like to make a motion to defer.
We can have two amendments on the floor to one resolution at a time. So you can make an amendment, and then we'll have to start voting on the amendments.
I don't want to make amendment, I want to make a motion to defer.
So you're going to make a motion to defer?
Yes, for one year.
For one year. All right. Proper motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ryan? All right. Any discussion on Commissioner Danner's amendment to defer for one year?
Can I lay out my argument? Though I'm thankful to the mayor for turning $3 million into $1 million of new borrowed money, that $1 million is still the tip of a $40 million iceberg. This is still an intent to fund a high school and possibly a middle school. And I think we should defer this for a year because we don't have, as of tonight, our budget numbers. We don't have the property assessment values. We don't know if, this is going to be the year, most likely, that we will have to either increase revenue or push back on spending. I think that we don't know where the children are going to come from. That will backfill the 500 to 700 open seats that'll be left at Ravenwood High School. We don't know if only Sunset Middle is going to feed into this high school. We have not seen the seven-year long-term plan from central office and the school board. The only two pressing reasons I have heard justify the school is that the land is cheap and that Ravenwood High School is overcrowded. While land is cheap, it still has a cost. It adds to our debt, and we have to pay interest and maintenance on it. And again, we don't know our budget numbers as of tonight. As for the overcrowding at Ravenwood, the 2010 school board could have reduced the overcrowding, and they chose not to. I do want to go on record as saying I don't believe this last zoning plan was done with the proper time and consideration, and I don't believe they're done yet. I think we're going to hear for years and years about the vacant hallways at Summit High School. I'm not saying the school is not an eventual reality. However, delaying this resolution a year would not only give us time to see the long-term vision for the school's proposed capital expenditures, it would allow this county to see the real-life results of the zoning. It may also afford the school board a chance to decide what they are going to do with some of their own financial assets. We, as commissioners, may be forced to take a hard and painful look at some of our own assets. They should be made to do the same. We don't know what they're going to do with Hennepin Lane property. We don't know what they're going to do with Pinewood Station. The taxpayers deserve the big-picture plan, so that's why I think we should defer it a full year.
Discussion on Commissioner Danner's amendment? Y'all ready to vote? Motion to defer for one year? Push a yes button if you're for, you know button if you're against. Anyone like to change the vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Six, yes. Sixteen, no.
The amendment fails, and we go back to the original amendment, which was Commissioner Green's about, you know, we read that. Amendment not to exceed $3 million in spending $30,000 per acre for purchase of the property, using all funds left from the Summit High School construction project and borrowing no more than $1 million. That also includes the due diligence on the property. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
On this amendment, Commissioner Green, is this amendment intended to look at the 100 acres still at 30,000 an acre?
To answer your question, the school board's proposal was to build a high school and a possibly a middle school on the same site. That's why they selected 100 acres. I think there's an opportunity because the publicity that this resolution got at $5 million, we had almost five property owners volunteer their property for purchase. I've never had that happen in the years I've been on this commission. We had people come forward. We usually have to go out and scratch and search and find a place, much as we did at Breeze Way or Concord Road now. But to answer your question, I think we're not locked in to 100 acres. What we wanted to do is we reduce this to something manageable as far as 100 acres plots in Nolansville. I'm not aware, I wear one, okay, for sure. There might be two or three. But I think this lends an opportunity with the, which we discussed somewhat in the Budget Committee, of an opportunity to have these property owners present to us the advantages of their property, what they're willing to take for their property. So it kind of gave us a bargaining chip. I think we're looking into that, as to whether that's a possibility to do that. They're in a site or in future sites that we have an opportunity to do it. So there's a bargaining chip in there that I think we can utilize as to what the real cost on this property will be. It will be 30,000, it will be 35, so.
Justice, a follow-up. I don't want to get in the business of, like people say, micromanaging. But Fairview High and Fairview Middle is built on 44 acres. Brentwood High, Brentwood Middle, 57 acres. Page High, Page Middle, 65 acres. Mr. Lynch used to always say, if we're going to eat hamburger, we all eat hamburger, and if we go eat steak, we're all go eat steak. I have a problem with 100 acres, and I mentioned that in the Education Committee, and I'll mention it again. So if we move forward with this, I'll have real problems with this 100 acres. But I don't want to sit up here and amend this resolution to say we're only going to look at 80 acres and drop it down to $2.4 million. I'm not going to do that. I'll let the amendment stand and the resolution stand as is from the school board and either vote it up or vote it down.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Green, does this resolution as written says spending $30,000 per acre, does that lock us into spending that amount? Because that's how that reads to me. I'd like to make a second-level amendment, if I might, Mr. Chairman, and insert spending up to $30,000 in that.
Proper motion, is there a second? Would we need an amendment on that?
Yeah, I think that's what the, I think that's the intent, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to make sure that...
If the amendment and the second agree that that was the intent, then you would not need a separate motion to amend. So if that's what your motion was meant to say, and the second agrees with that...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure that gets recorded somewhere, that that's not locking us into spending that amount, that it's up to that amount.
Which also includes the due diligence on the property, too.
And I think in the past, we've always asked for money to purchase a school site, and we can put an intent to fund $2 on it, which I can never understand. We advertise which we're willing to pay before we go out and look for a piece of property, but we do that. And so when we say we're going to spend $5 million on 100 acres, that doesn't mean we're going to spend $5 million on 100 acres. It's part of the intent to fund.
The original resolution does say up to, up to $5 million, and so I just want to make sure that it's recorded in there, that it's up to, and that that's not locking us into that $30,000.
All right, duly noted. Cut that down, Ms. Anderson. Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, it's a buyer's market out there now, and we've seen and read it over the last few months that speculators that make their living by buying when it's a buyer's market are fairly active in Williamson County now. That being said, I think this is an opportunity for us to be proactive and take advantage of this buyer's market. If this economy were strong, up and running, this same land, we wouldn't even be considering it for $30,000. I mean, they wouldn't consider that type of office. I really think it's an opportunity to take advantage of the buyer's market if a site is found, and I encourage you to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Let's see, where are we? Any further discussion on the, if we voted on the amendment? No, okay. We need to vote on the amendment to, up to $30,000 per acre to include the due diligence. Ready to vote? All in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Anyone would like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen, yes. Three, no.
Amendment passes. Now back to the original, to the resolution as amended. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I asked Dr. Looney in our Education Committee about the projected numbers, and I just want to, we thought we just go get this deferred for one month and look into some of those numbers. Right now, the students that are in fifth through eighth grade would be in high school, if I'm correct. I mean, and if I'm wrong, I'd like to know. The students that are in fifth through eighth grade would be in high school at the year that this is going to be open. They'll be high school students, correct? Not through 12th grade? Is that the year that this school is planned to be open? Our fifth graders through eighth graders, right now, if we project them up four years.
Potentially, Mr. Jones, but I'm not able to answer the question completely because we don't know how long it's going to take us to acquire the property. There's another step in this process which would require you to fund a high school. If it were on a fast track, and I'll call it a fast track in a four-year cycle, then you would be correct.
Well, we've got, right now, in those grades, 9,288 students. Well, we've got, right now, in those grades, 9,288 students. But your projection shows that we'll have 11,445 students in high school then. I'm just wanting to know where the growth is coming from.
Well, I'll answer your question as specifically as I can, given that I don't have a lot of data with me. The Sunset Middle School zone, that northeastern quadrant, is, continues to grow. By the time you get to 2014, 2015, Sunset Middle School will be over capacity. So too will Woodland Middle School and Brentwood Middle School. And so not only are we growing at the high school level, but we continue to grow at the middle school level.
Well, I understand all that. What I'm trying to say is, we've got these many students now. We're going to have to have an additional 2,000 students in the whole county, according to your projection, at least. Okay, we've got 9,288. We're projecting 11,445. And if we build this building, we'll have 14,000 high school seats. So that's, you know, that's one reason I was hoping this would be deferred for one month. I know Ms. Daner had it for one year, and I couldn't go for that, but I could go for one month to get some of those answers we'd ask, me some of those questions asked and answered that we'd have had at the last Education Committee meeting.
Well, I can certainly answer that, I believe.
Okay.
This, this has been a conversation that we've had for the last several months while we were going through the rezoning process. And my, my interpretation of the conversations that I've had with you collectively as individuals is that you do not expect for us to bus students from one end of the county to the other just to fill us classroom seat. Mrs. Daner very eloquently talked about the vacant seats at Summit High School. I can't argue that. There will be vacant seats at Summit High School. But as an education officer, I will tell you, I think that we would be doing a grave disservice to students if we bus them from northeast or west Williamson County to Summit High School. And so what we do know about this county is this county continues to grow. All different geographic areas of this county will grow. And for some of our schools, we will not have to rezone them in the foreseeable future because we'll have some vacant seats. Mention was made about backfilling Ravenwood High School tonight as well. We believe that Ravenwood High School will not need to be backfilled because we believe the growth in the general area will allow Ravenwood High School not to have to be rezoned in the foreseeable future, which is what I believe your constituents, and certainly our constituents, have been asking for while we went through this year-long rezoning process. Mr. Jones, it's a true statement. We're going to have vacant seats, but our boys and girls, I would argue, are more than just a number. They're students, and we're trying to build community schools to the extent we can, given the infrastructure, where it is, and where the growth is happening. And this school will allow the northeastern part of our county to have long-term stability. We are looking at how we might hopefully build a middle school, high school combination complex like we have done at Summit and Spring Hill, Spring Station Middle, so that we have continuity through the process rather than rezoning students every few years. I hope that answers your question.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Looney addressed parts of my question, so I just want to make one point. This resolution is on land, not on schools. We will get an opportunity to vote on an additional $40 million, as Commissioner Daner spoke of. This is the tip of the iceberg, but it does not mean we're building a school. It just means we're offering to buy land. That's why I support this resolution at this point and think we ought to go over those numbers again and again if and when we see a resolution to build a high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Ford?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I hear a lot of good discussion, and I'd like to make a motion that, that as the Education Committee recommended, we defer this for one month and bring it back to us in the February meeting.
Proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Who was my second? Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on the motion? You ready, Linda? If you're in favor of the motion to defer for one month, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
11 yes, 11 no.
The motion fails. All right, back to the resolution as amended. Let's see, who was next to speak? Commissioner Williams?
Question.
Proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brockman on the second. Ready to vote on calling the question? Oh, voice vote, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
So we're, we're ready to vote on 111-8 as amended? If you're in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
17 yes, 5 no.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Resolution 111-9, resolution appropriating $299,608 excess central cafeteria fund balance for replacement, renovation, and new equipment. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
School Board? 12-4-0 against. Education?
Education, 7 yes, 0 no.
Budget?
Budget Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a requirement by the, I believe, the state that particular net cash reserves need to be utilized, and so these expenditures will be appropriated for equipment for central cafeteria.
Very good. Any discussion on the resolution? I see none. We're ready to vote? All in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Barnwell?
Mr. Barnwell? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111-10, resolution amending the 2010-2011 general-purpose school budget $50,000 for certain expenses from additional state revenue. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval. Second.
Proper motion, Commissioner Little the second. School Board? 12-4-0 against. Education?
Education, 7 yes, 0 no.
Budget?
Budget Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
These are funds that will come in from a grant, and they will be utilized for support materials for social education students.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, push a yes button.
Wait. Linda, turn that button.
Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution 111-11, resolution appropriating in the general-purpose school 2010-11 budget $31,585 additional federal funds for non-personal personnel expenditures for the Board's adult education program. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval. Second.
Proper motion, second. School Board, 10 yes, 0 no. Education?
Education, 7 yes, 0 no.
Budget?
Budget Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, these are federal funds that will be put toward our adult education program that we, Williamson County administers.
Any discussion? Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I have a question, and I'm sure who would be able to answer it. We passed the, anything that come through a grant that they had to acknowledge that they would only, it was only there for that, that job was there for a grant. Would this type of funding fall under that?
Since it's for equipment, I don't see that, I don't see that being an issue.
Yeah, this is equipment. I think that would just be personnel. Any further discussion? I see none. You ready, Linda? If you support it, push a yes button. Opposed, no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111-12, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of $1,780,300 for the purchase of regular buses for the 2011-2012 school year from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson the second. School Board, 10 yes, 0 no. Education?
7 yes, 0 no.
Budget?
Budget Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the time of the year that we approve new buses. It takes about six months, and so you put the order in now, and it's been determined that there needs to be a purchase of seven replacement buses, 12 growth buses, so the cost is appropriate for what our needs are. The, obviously, there have been some, some changes with the new zoning, and that has increased the number of buses. But we all, we have this before us on a regular basis, and I would urge you to support.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Daner?
There was, I was actually a no vote on that.
So sorry.
On education, so education 6-1?
Education should be changed to 6-1.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Daner?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question for clarification, and this is why, one of the reasons I voted no. The amount of buses required because of growth, it had 12 in resolution, and then six were mentioned at the Education Committee, and in Budget Committee, the number shrank to three. I just need to understand exactly how many buses are because of the zoning.
There are, it's our belief that there are three additional buses that are going to be required long-term for the rezoning. A couple of the buses are, you're buying them a year ahead because they have to be replaced next year, and it helps us with grandfathering of students, particularly Independence Summit and the Brentwood area, to students that we're going to, going to go to Brentwood High School now.
And that doesn't include the new rapid rail bus for West Haven to Independence? That's it, you're reutilizing a different bus for that purpose?
Yes, ma'am, I believe that's correct.
Follow-up, Commissioner Daner? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, what is done with those older, those seven older buses? Can we sell those?
Yes, sir, we can, when, when, well, first of all, if they're serviceable at all, we do keep some spare buses. If one breaks down, then we have a backup bus. But the Transportation Department does declare excess buses as surplus, and then we sell them.
Okay. Any idea how many you are going to hold of those seven for reserve? That may not be a fair question, but-
They have too many miles for us to keep, so I'm told that they will be sold.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Looney.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Ford?
Dr. Looney, very quick. These are all general education buses. Quite often in these, we see a certain number of special education buses also. Is there not anticipated to be a need for additional special education buses for the upcoming school year?
Of course, that's subject to change because the number of special education buses we have is based predicated on how many special education students-
Correct.
-we have that have those needs. We don't anticipate that need at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we didn't anticipate another resolution next month or the following month at this point that would include additional special education buses.
John's shaking his head, so I'm not sure how to read that, but Leslie?
We have, we have a air of funds for the special buses.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hayes?
A question either for Dr. Looney or for John. Of the seven replacement buses, is that because of years of service, the 12, 15 years, whatever the state allows, or, or, and the mileage, or both?
Either or.
The combination of both?
Some have already been extended to 17 years in the state. It didn't for that long that-
You could extend them, but if they had over 200,000 miles, you couldn't. And all of these seven meet one or other, one of the other of those restrictions that can't be used anymore.
Do we not have any others, then, that we could expand that, and cut down on the number of buses in years or mileage?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And just my question, thank you.
Any other discussion? We're ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 111-12, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes, 1 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111-13, resolution amending the 2010-11 general-purpose school budget $50,347 for certain expenses from an additional state revenue. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Proper motion?
Second.
Commissioner Smith the second. School Board voted 9-4-0, no, 1 pass. Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, this particular resolution will allow the additional three special ed teacher assistants. The revenue is coming from the grant for state high-cost students, and so that money will be used for these assistants.
And the committee vote on that?
I'm sorry, 7 yes, 0 no.
And Budget, Commissioner Green?
Budget Committee voted 5-4-0 against.
All right. Any discussion on this resolution? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111-14, resolution amending the 2010-11 capital projects fund budget to provide pass-through funding and local match for the hazard mitigation grant program by FEMA and TEMA for those properties eligible for the flood buyout program in the unincorporated area of Williamson County. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Barnwell. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4-4, 1 against.
Do we have a property committee? Did they go through? Who's Chairman of Property Committee? Do we have a vote on that?
Mr. Hayes.
Commissioner Hayes?
It was, I believe, unanimous, I believe it was 5-4, 0 against.
Okay, thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones? Uh, explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is, uh, due to the flood that we had back in the spring, there were several properties that we, that we can buy back to make for green space, to help these property owners in that areas, that they're just go get flooded again later on down the line, probably.
Uh, any questions, discussion? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Uh, I was the one vote against on the budget committee, and, uh, the reason for that is, is while my heart certainly goes out to these individuals that were affected by the May floods, my own family personally helped, uh, clearing homes out, it does not seem like that is the role for a small, controlled, limited government, uh, when, uh, with all due respect, these individuals knew they were living within one-hundred, one-hundred-year floodplain, they have insurance, and to me, it does not seem like, um, that we should be distributing the public monies, uh, to, uh, to purchase these lands. So, uh, I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Green?
Uh, question, this is approximately seven families, uh, seven properties were involved in this, uh, how many of those have agreed to participate at the present time?
Uh, William?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm William Andrews, uh, Assistant County Engineer, been working on this program. Uh, we have, uh, identified, we identified seven properties, uh, and out of the seven, we had six properties that had, uh, met our deadline of December the tenth to apply for this program. Uh, as it looks right now, we're probably gonna wind up with about four different properties.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
All right, any questions? Mr. Andrews? I see none, thank you, William. Uh, ready to vote? All in favor of resolution one, eleven, fourteen? Push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen yes, three no.
Resolution passes. Resolution one, eleven, fifteen. Resolution amending the five-year capital improvements program budget in the two thousand ten, eleven capital projects budget by amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an inter-local agreement with the city of Spring Hill to define each party's responsibilities in the installation of a water and wastewater line to Heritage Park. Uh, Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Herbert, the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee? Did it go to them?
Yes, it did, it was unanimous.
Okay. Six, zero. Uh, budget committee?
Budget committee, five, four, zero against.
Uh, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, this, uh, Heritage Park, um, was serving fifty, uh, players at the time that, that it was first built. We were looking for water sources and sewer sources at the time. The climate was not right politically to, uh, partnership and have the agreement that we've now, uh, arrived with the cooperation of Spring Hill. We are asking your support of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be taken from the recreation privilege tax money to go into putting in sewer that will connect to the Spring Hill sewer system and water that will connect to HBTS through a line that's going to be installed with the work of the, uh, employees of the Spring Hill City under our, our, our alder and our people's direction. It is a win-win for everyone, it's a partnership, and I'd like to introduce and thank the people here tonight who have helped make it possible. We have already met Brad, who spoke to us earlier, but we have Alderman Elliot Mitchell and Alderman Rick Graham here, uh, who, raise your hand, guys, who have been from day one have been very interested in us having water and sewage. At this point, as you heard earlier, we have some seven hundred to seven hundred fifty young youth who are out there playing without water and without sewage, and I do have pictures, if you'd like to see, but it really is an unfortunate situation. It is not a sanitary situation, and by having water and sewage, we can make this a much better place for our young people to play. We also want to thank the work that the mayor and Alderman have done and are doing, and their cooperation. Partnerships is what it's all about, and I'm so glad that we've been able to be a partner with them on this, and I appreciate that, and, and Commissioner Herbert, uh, has had a, a big deal in this, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Herbert, would you like to add something?
Well, I just want to ask for the support. If anyone's ever been there, it's pretty shocking, it's like an old-fashioned outdoor toilet, and it's, you know, there's a lot of kids using that, and I would ask for everyone's support.
All right. Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as a grandfather of seven, in his sixties, that all seven of them use that park, this is solely needed. I mean...
Thank you, Paul Paul. Commissioner Williams?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sit on the, I sit on the Parks and Rec Committee, and if you saw the pictures, all I gotta say, it's a, it's a sanitation issue. Clearly, in that, it's a sanitation issue, and I'd urge you to vote and support it. Thank you.
Hmm, uh, no further comment? Ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
All right. And I, I would like to also thank the city of Spring Hill for helping out on that project. Uh, resolution one, eleven, twenty. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven Parks and Recreation budget by sixty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. Revenue, revenues to come from donations. Uh, Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, zero.
All right. Budget committee?
Budget committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is, uh, fees that they collect for their referees and administration staffs for, for the ball programs, and it's just a pass-through money.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor, push, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone?
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
And resolution passes. Resolution one, eleven, twenty-three. Resolution amending resolution number eleven, nine, twenty-four relative to the participation agreement with metropolitan government of Nashville and Davidson County, and to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement concerning the installation cost for the provision of sewer services to the Nolansville Fire Hall. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper motion, Commissioner Select, Commissioner Little, the second. Property committee? Did it go through property?
It is five, zero.
Five, zero. Budget committee?
Budget committee voted five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, this is, uh, the city, town, pardon me, the town of Nolansville has installed sewer through the historic district. It gives us an opportunity, uh, that ends within a few hundred feet of the fire hall in Nolansville, which in dire need of adding a bay to that same building, but the bay would be located on the Alderman and Limefield, which inhibits us adding the bay, so the only res- resolution to this was to add sewer. The initial, uh, the initial estimate we got from Metro on that was, I believe it was correct, it was, uh, sixty thousand dollars, or sixty-five thousand dollars. And it was fifty thousand dollars. After they discovered that there's fiber optics and, and gas lines in the same area that they're gonna have to put in the sewer line, uh, they came back and asked it for another sixty-five thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do this. Still, they did it. This, this bay has been on the books for months and almost years. We have a fire hall truck that's now housed in a building outside the fire hall for protection from the weather and the cold temperatures. They need this bay. Uh, that's all I got to say, is it's a bay that needed to be added, but it was inhibited because the Alderman Limefield interfered with where we're gonna pace, so we have to replace the septic system with sewer.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? I see none. Uh, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Uh, the next resolution?
Resolution passes.
Oh, the resolution passes, I'm sorry. Uh, late resolution number one, eleven, twenty-six. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven property management budget by ninety, nine thousand, sixty dollars. Res, revenue is to come from miscellaneous refunds. Uh, Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Uh, don't believe it went to any committees. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Uh, yes, the property management spent some money making improvements, and this is a reimbursement from those improvements from Middle Tennessee Electric. We've gotten the check, and we need to appropriate it.
Very good. Uh, any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution one, eleven, three. Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agriculture Exposition Center for an event of the Nashville Kennel Club.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. Uh, property committee?
It was not unanimous.
On property? Okay.
It was an abstention.
Okay. I believe there was one abstention. Uh, budget committee?
Budget committee, five, four, zero against.
Uh, Commissioner Brockman, can you address this?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution has come before us many times. Uh, the Nashville Kennel Club is very responsible and has, um, a, an opportunity for, uh, the group to come together early and, and mingle and serve alcohol, and it's, it's been appropriate in the past, and I don't see a problem again this year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, any further discussion? We're ready to vote. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Uh, Commissioner Beathard? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Eighteen yes, two abstain, two no.
And motion passes. Uh, resolution one, eleven, nineteen. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a lease agreement with the state of Tennessee for office space in the historical part of the courthouse to house the public defender's office.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Uh, property committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, budget committee?
Budget committee, five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, since we have beautifully restored the, uh, historic courthouse in downtown Franklin, we are looking for tenants on one floor who can, uh, serve the public and, uh, give back to the community in their needs and in, uh, uh, some payment. We're looking now at the, um, public defender's office who's expressed an interest through the state of Tennessee in renting a portion of that building. Part of the building, as you know, will be left for the court system, and this is the area that will not be, uh, needed by the, uh, regular courthouse, uh, area. So this is being looked at, and we'd like to say that everyone who's gone in the courthouse, and if you have not had a chance to tour it since its renovation, do take the chance of, of going by. It was beautifully done, and we want to thank everyone for the, uh, work they did. It was under the, uh, leadership of, uh, uh, former commission chairman Houston Naren, who, uh, was the chairman of the Special Courthouse Committee, and several of you served on that committee. It has been beautifully redone, and with the, uh, public defender's office, uh, serving there, they will build out to their needs, and this just gives permission for our mayor to issue a, enter into a contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
And resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a lease agreement with the city of Franklin for use of Fieldstone Farms Park. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Uh, property committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Budget committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is for our annual lease with Fieldstone Farms for the adult softball program. It's been completely redone after the flood, and it's ready to go.
Very good. Any discussion? Ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution one, eleven, twenty-four. Resolution amending the five-year capital improvements program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson, the second. Highway commission voted five, four, zero against. Education committee? Did they vote?
I believe it was unanimous.
Okay. Parks and Rec Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Law enforcement, public safety committee? Law enforcement? Got here, seven, four, zero against. Budget committee?
Budget committee, five, four, zero against.
All right. Uh, any discussion? I, I would like to make one comment. On the Parks and Rec budget, they amended that, and we don't need a vote on this, but they, they amended, uh, the last three years down to five million dollars each, so just wanted to point that out to you. Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, just a, a question, and I'd like to make sure that I'm, uh, understanding. This is our usual five-year plan that we have every year, but we do not, by voting for this, we're simply voting that we've had a part of the planning process so we can acquire grants and other things that, that dwindle down or come down to us. It does not mean, does it, that we are absolutely endorsing every purchase and every building and every activity here? I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding because they'll say, well, it's already been approved by a five-year vote, and my understanding is that is not the case. These things will independently have to come back to us. Is that correct?
That's correct, but you do have to have the five-year plan for the privileged tax as part of the enabling statute is why you have to have it, but you're correct, individual projects will have to come back to you.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Green?
Yes, I'm looking at the five-year plans for all of them. Uh, I work for IBM, and we used to have a term, working paper, not paperwork, and when I got on the commission, I thought this was paperwork, but it's trying to turn it into working paper. Okay. And that's why we went through there and they looked at these, and I think all the departments, uh, did an excellent job in projecting what their five-year plan will be, and, and, though we did adjust the recreation department down five, five million for the last three, uh, years there. So I think it's, not to put it in terms of being, uh, it's gonna happen, things will get adjusted up, things will get adjusted down as the time comes, and some will be delayed from one year to the next, or in some might be moved up, but it's a working paper. I think we're getting closer to a working paper than paperwork.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Ford?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, in our packet, in, in this, I've got two versions of the school system, one that was revised, uh, December eighth, two thousand nine, and then this one is December sixteenth, two thousand ten, and I, I believe if I'm reading this right, that the estimated cost for the school system has, has reduced from a hundred and seventy-one million to nine... right, that the estimated cost for the school system has reduced from $171 million to $92 million. Is that correct? Am I reading that? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? If you're in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone like, Commissioner Wilson? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
And resolution passes. Resolution 11125, resolution to authorize the Williamson County Register of Deeds Office to write off the attached list of checks. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
These are, the checks that have been written to the county, that appears that they are, the debt is uncollectible, and we're suggesting that we just write them off.
Very good. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question, I mean, throughout our court systems and the clerk's offices, they get a lot of checks, and this, I notice all these are from March of 2009. From the comptroller's office, and Jeff, you may be able to add to this, but from Tennessee Comptroller's Office, are we gonna have to take this action every month, or can we do it once a year? Or can we, I know we have to take some affirmative action.
I believe we can do it annually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any further discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor, push a yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
And resolution passes. Any further business? Commissioner Little?
Yes, clerk's office has made available to us the packet in electronic format instead of hard copy, and Commissioner Danner and I both have a copy of it up here if you would like to see it. It worked pretty smooth here for an experimental run, but we've got it up and running. If you'd like to see how it works, I'd be glad to sit it here and show you.
Okay, thank you.
Just like to say in a second that Republicans can be green.
Duly noted. Couple of things I'd like to add. I'd like to thank Lynn Sutton for security here tonight. Also, I'd like to thank everybody for bearing with us, for postponing our meeting last week and doing it this week. One other thing I want to mention, the Ag Expo Park, they had it last weekend, they're having it this weekend for those in the audience, in us, that are horse people, they're having an open arena ride this weekend, so you can bring your horse out and ride inside. Hopefully, we don't have too bad of a weather, and I went out there and said hello, and it was a lot of positive feedback on that, so kind of opening it up for the people. This is also the 10th anniversary of the Ag Park this year, so we're trying to celebrate that, so. And there be no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.